Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, The Amsterdam News, and Gotham Gazette, is pleased to bring you a debate among the Democratic candidates running for city council in District 2. Hi, I'm Ben Max, Executive Editor of Gotham Gazette. The New York City primaries will be held on Tuesday, September 12th, for offices from mayor through the city council. The winners of the primaries, like this one in Council District 2, will be the Democratic nominees in November's general election. Some races did not have party primaries. City Council District 2 certainly does, though, and we're here today with the Democratic field. The district covers some of the east side of Manhattan: the East Village, Gramercy Park, Rose Hill, the Lower East Side, the southern part of Murray Hill, and Kips Bay. Rosie Mendez, the district's current city council representative, is not eligible to run for reelection due to term limits. We've asked the five candidates here today to keep their responses to my questions to about a minute, and any rebuttals they might have to about 30 seconds. The candidates are seated by random drawing. Starting from my left, we have Mary Silver, Ronnie Cho, Carlina Rivera, Jasmine Sanchez, and Jorge Vasquez. Welcome, thank you for being here. As I just discussed, we'll try to keep answers to about a minute. If there's a need for rebuttal, try to jump in, 30 seconds, but I'll try to moderate how the flow of the conversation goes. So, welcome, thank you for being here. It's an exciting day, exciting race. So, we're going to start to my right here with Mr. Vasquez. Closing statements will start later on from my left. For each of you, in about a minute, what makes you prepared for this role of city council member? Why are you the best candidate, Mr. Vasquez?
Sure. Being born and raised in the district, and having family throughout the district, and being able to benefit from the resources, makes me, one, familiar with the district. My training as an advocate, as an attorney, makes me qualify. For the major part of my career, I've been in public service. Before being an attorney, I was a counselor in New York City Public Schools. So, I understand education, I certainly understand our district, and I understand what happens with poorly-written legislation, as I've had to argue and persuade judges. I'm uniquely positioned in that I'm the only candidate who is, one, a litigator, and that means someone who argues before a judge, but, two, I worked for a judge. I helped the judge interpret what the law says, what it means, and the legislative history. I also understand the importance of being compassionate and listening. And ensuring in passing legislation, we need to make sure that we have the residents and our neighbors who are best situated to tell their story. But telling their story to pass law requires them to feel comfortable. And I feel that, based on my training and being from the district, raised in the district, as an attorney and as an advocate, that makes me best fit to be the next city council person in District 2.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez.
Born and raised in public housing, in Baruch Houses, and educated through the public school system, and a founder of my own nonprofit organization, I provided direct services to the constituents, from infants all the way to senior citizens. I've done numerous amount of volunteer work within the community. On my arrival from Stony Brook University, I took on a role of case manager with Henry Street Settlement, and that allowed me to provide bio-social psychos to young people and their families. So, I know that there are specific needs, based on the assessments that we did. I feel that most of my work has been just for the betterment of the community, from service-learning projects and community initiatives. And I was also the former community liaison to Senator Squadron, and there I learned most of policies and how to represent and speak to the specific constituents in regards to some of the issues that have been pressing our community. For me, it's more personal, only because there's some things that have been going on within the district that have not been followed through for the last 20 years. One being the Baruch Bath House, the other being Charras, and then the preservation of our small businesses, which is the Low East Side bid that I'm proposing. And I just feel that I'm young, it's a new wave, a new generation, new leadership, and I think that's what our district needs.
We'll come back to some of the things you mentioned. Ms. Rivera.
Hi, yes, so I'm Carlina Rivera, and I'm running to represent the district where I've spent my life. I was born and raised and still live on Stanton Street. And people know me. I'm approachable, I'm personable, people trust me. I've been with them to housing court, I've tutored their kids, I've been a community organizer, I volunteered on campaigns that have brought tangible resources to the district. I have legislation experience, direct service experience, and I've worked navigating the city budget. So, I have the skills that really are inclusive of the demands and the responsibilities of a councilperson. And people know they can come to me because I'm informed. They know I'm a good listener, I'm compassionate, and they know that I'm a leader that people can look to, and people can trust, and really just know that I'm going to get them to their next step, and really help them have the information they need when they're really struggling financially and going through a number of challenges. Especially in this time of Trump, with the policies coming from Washington, you need someone who has all the skills from day one, and is also going to be able to be a representative of the city that people look to for progressive policies.
Thank you. Mr. Cho.
I've spent my entire career as a public servant. I've delivered tangible results on a national level. I worked for President Barack Obama at the White House, and was critical in electing him in 2008, and also in his administration on issues like the Affordable Care Act, College of Affordability, climate change legislation. I've been in the arena, I've been there at the national level, and I want to draw from those experiences and that unique skill set it takes to thrive at that level in the big leagues, and to bring it back down to my neighborhood, my home on Avenue C. And no one has the kind of experience that I do in government, deploying resources, connecting people with their government. I think if you believe as I do that government can and should be a force of good in people's lives, then you need someone who's been in that arena before, and who can deliver results for people, not simply advocate, not simply just keep fighting, in these other words, but actually delivering for people. And that's why I think I am the best candidate for this district.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
Thanks, Ben. I'm Mary Silver. I'm a progressive Democrat, running for city council District 2, and I have lived, worked, and raised my family in this council district for 25 years. I think that distinguishes me alone. My adult life has been in public service, not as a paid public servant, but as a working parent, raising three daughters in New York City Public Schools, and at the same time serving my community. I got my political education in the schoolyard, seeing $200,000 in budget cuts year after year. I jumped in, became class mom, PTA president, sat on the Community Education Council for seven years, sat on the Community Board 6, Housing, Homelessness, and Human Rights Committee. I also am on the advisory board for the 30th Street Men's Shelter. I believe that solutions emerged for the community. I have a litigation background, I am an attorney, I also have a JD PhD from NYU. As I said, I've worked, lived, and raised my family, and lived in various places throughout the district. I know it very well, and I know the people very well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you all for those sort of opening statements, and now we'll move into some more specific questions. I'll try to direct things around a bit. If you feel like you've been mentioned, or you've been attacked in some way, and you want to rebut, either throw me a signal, or try to jump in, and I'll try to monitor that. So, you've talked a little bit about your qualifications, let's talk about the district a little bit more specifically. What are the needs of the district? Try to be specific. And when you talk about a need, let's say affordable housing, what is something tangibly, specifically, that you would do about it? So, doesn't have to be affordable housing, but what's a big need of the district, and what would you do about it? Mr. Vasquez.
Sure. I think affordable housing is something that's incredibly important throughout the district, not only on the Low East Side, but also in Kips and Gramercy alike. And the thing that we could do immediately about it is create a legislation that requires landlords to register their buildings, so that way we know who to hold accountable. Right now, some of the problems we have is we don't know who to hold accountable for our buildings. There's too much shuffling around of a sort of buildings. Whenever a landlord does something bad, they kind of pass the baton, and it's this baton passing amongst landlords, amongst companies. But we need to track the landlord, so that way we know who to hold accountable, to make sure that rents are being properly registered. And if rents are being properly registered, then we save the housing stock that we have. Another thing that I would propose doing is creating a task force, a housing task force, that would focus in on ensuring that rents are properly registered, and doing self audits to roll back rents if they aren't in compliance with our current city and state laws.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez.
While there are various issues in the district, I feel education is something that's really big. Being a previous foster mom, my children actually were bullied, and they were not accepted in the current school that they're in. I feel that there are grants that are just sitting that have been given to certain schools within the area, and, you know, Community Board 3 doesn't have an education committee, just focus on education, and that's where a lot of things just slip through the cracks. I just feel that that's one issue. The other one is the restoration of the Baruch Bath House, being that I am a lifelong resident of Baruch Houses. I know that that 7,000-plus building, square foot building, needs to be utilized. You know, we have close to 1,800 kids that live in our development, there are close to 9,000 people that live in the development, and our seniors need a center to go to. And, you know, previous council members have allocated funds outside of the district as opposed to within the district. So, I think that that's a really big deal for me. The Charras Building, I think that that has to open up for negotiations. I know that there's plans to build a dorm there, but I think that elected officials and community leaders need to come back to the table and negotiate. And lastly...
Come back for another issue at another time. Ms. Rivera, something, one or two issues, and exactly what you'd do about them?
Sure. So, you know, the governor and the mayor have spoken a lot about the MTA and our investment on the city and state level in a public system. But I think that when we talk about public systems, we have to start considering NICA as a general part of our infrastructure. You know, we have 176,000 families in these developments, and almost 10,000 of them living in District 2, the majority of them on the waterfront. So, we are a waterfront community. So, I think that there's a couple of things that we have to do about NICA. We have to reform a broken repair system. We have to look at a quicker and more efficient timeline in getting these repairs. And we have to step up funding in terms of infrastructure, in terms of the sanitation on the campuses, and we really have to make sure that we're preserving this true model of affordable housing. When we're looking at other forms of affordable housing, we also have to start looking at innovative solutions. We have to look at financing options based on models like Mitchellama on the Community Land Trust, which the city just finally stepped up some money and invested in. And so, yes, affordable housing is incredibly important. You really want to feel good about where you're living in order to contribute. But when we talk about public systems, we have to start talking about NICA and public housing. We have to start looking at our education system and how to bring a balance and bring equity to every school and every corner of the district. And of course, we have to take care of our transportation system.
Thank you. Mr. Cho.
I think it's very clear that affordable housing is the issue of our time in our community. But I want to take a step further and say even affordable rents for small businesses, you know, that are critically important pillars of our community. As someone who grew up in the kitchen of my parents' restaurant, I know how important small businesses are for especially people of color, immigrants, and their entry point into the American dream in our community. And I think, you know, advocating and fighting for rent stabilization for small businesses, so we're not continuing to kick out our bodegas, or our delis, or small businesses for new Starbucks, and new bank, it's just, it's too much. It's not, it's not helping our communities. And when it comes to affordable housing, I think there are issues and programs that are already in place, like SCREE, that are completely, they're helpful, but they're undersubscribed. And that's outrageous, that there's a program here to keep seniors in their apartments, and yet we're not doing a good enough job with our government officials to market these resources. I think it's an outrage, and it's something that I will be delivering for my community. And the same that we're campaigning block to block, going up and down from the East 35th all the way down to the Lower East Side, and making sure that people know what's available to them, and to not be ignored by the powers that be.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
Thank you. So, equity and excellence in our schools is a priority for Council District 2 and all of New York City. I will be a champion for education in the city council. I want New Yorkers to believe in and support public education again. We've really lost that thread, and it's critical. Education changes everything, learning changes everything. But what I hear when I'm traveling the district is affordability across the board. Certainly affordable housing, but also just the cost of living in New York City for seniors, for young people, for families. We're really at a crisis point. So, I think it's critical for us to start looking at how do we exact benefits for the community from developers? How do we stop giving 421A exemptions that amount to billions of dollars? Doling that out and getting very little impact for our community? We would be better using that money and building affordable housing. Also, small businesses. They are the character of our neighborhoods. When you lose your favorite little restaurant, or shoemaker in your neighborhood, that's undermining the strength of a community. So, we need rent protections for small businesses, and we need to make sure that they have that right to renewal. That's something the city council has talked about since 1988. Enough talk, let's take some action here.
Thank you. So, a couple folks, everybody just about hit on affordability, we'll talk about, you know, housing affordability, we'll talk about that a little bit more. Couple of you at the end there spoke about small businesses. So, to everybody, just a little quicker this round, you referenced the Small Business Jobs Survival Act there, it seems like, which would reform how landlords can treat their business tenants. So, do you support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act? And anything else you want to say about sort of supporting small businesses?
Yeah, sure. So, I do support the small...
Yes, you so.
Yes, I do support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. And I support a model for arbitration, similar to the way the Southern District of New York handles employment discrimination cases. The arbitration before the Southern District of New York is currently on a volunteer basis. Every attorney in the state of New York who's a practicing private practitioner is required to do pro bono hours. So, what that means is they provide free legal services in this arbitration to ensure the fair and just result. I think modeling the arbitration part of the Small Business Jobs Survival Act after a program that's been effective in the Southern District of New York would be great and not cost us any additional money, which is very important, and also in preserving renewals within our small businesses.
Putting a pipeline of pro bono attorneys in to help small businesses in the arbitration?
The way the, the way the legislation is drafted right now, it calls for an arbitration if a landlord and a business owner disagree on the renewal and the renewal terms. I'm saying we keep the language the way it is, and with regards to the arbitration, we follow the model that's before the Southern District of New York, which is based on a volunteer basis, and helps fulfill the pro bono requirement that attorneys already are obligated to do, so that way it's cost-effective on the city as well.
Thank you.
I am in support of the Small Business Jobs Survival Act as well, with saying that I know that there have been numerous businesses that have disappeared from our community, and the goal is to preserve one community, keep the jobs that are currently in the community, within the community, and ensure that our small businesses are not, one, jumping from location to location because they're being priced out, or just nonexistent. I'm proposing the Low East Side a bid, and it's going to be from areas of Avenue A to Avenue D, Houston Street to 14th Street. And what this would do, it would ensure that our current small businesses are preserved, and that we're able to bring in new businesses that are community tied, mom-and-pop shops, entrepreneurs from within the community. It'll also, we would definitely benefit from the advertisement and the publicity that we'll be getting, so that these businesses do have income that is coming in. And I think that that's the best way to do it, because we've been losing a lot, and I think that when we need, when we're focusing on preserving, we have to put specific things in place. And I think the bid will be the perfect thing to start with, especially in that area, because it is the most economically deprived.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera.
So, yes, I support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. I think it's important for small businesses, especially responsible operators who have a great business plan, to be able to lock in a lease that's going to allow them to invest in the longevity of their space. So, I'm the granddaughter of a bodega owner, and I am the wife of a small business owner in the Gramercy area. So, I have seen firsthand the challenges, the blood, sweat, and tears that go into opening a small business. And there are multiple things that affect these operators. So, we have the property tax issue that's passed on from landlords, and I'd love to work on legislation with other colleagues at other levels on how to address that. It's also, of course, the lease, locking in a great lease that's fair, and it's navigating city bureaucracy. So, you know, whether it's working with the Department of Health or the Department of Buildings to make sure that really, or even small business services, making sure that operators have the information they need, and making sure specifically that minority and women-owned businesses have the information they need to really be entrepreneurs in our community. I want to make sure that, again, they have access, they have the information. We can look at special zoning districts to really promote retail diversity. And we really have to penalize landlords in this huge consolidation of properties and commercial storefronts who leave their storefronts vacant on purpose. We need to have some sort of legislation on that, to really put some consequences in for people who leave these vacancies all over Avenue A and Third Avenue, which brings sanitation issues amongst others.
Thank you. Ms. Cho, Small Business Jobs Survival Act?
Yes, I'll add my voice to the support of this, of this act. But I guess the issue that I have is why hasn't it passed? You know, this is a city council that has 48 Democrats in it, a Democratic mayor, comptroller, public advocate, you name it. So, where's the conflict here? If we all actually believe in supporting small businesses and workers, then what's the problem? I think the status quo likes to, you know, deliver lip service, and they like to say, "Yes, we're for these issues, and we want to keep people in their, in their businesses." But where's the action? Where's the accountability? And I'm just tired of hearing people say how much they're rah-rah about small businesses and these community pillars. By the end of the day, where's the, where's the actual action? Where are we delivering for people to make sure that...
So, quickly, so if you're elected, you enter office in the new year, what do you do to make sure that something that's been stagnant for decades actually moves?
I think we need to hold the mayor accountable. I think we need to build coalitions of Democrats across the city, and actually ask the mayor, "Why aren't you supportive of this? Why won't you sign this bill?" And let him explain himself. Let him understand that this is no longer an issue that we can just pass along for decades.
Well, I think as you indicated, it has to move through the city council first, so you might have to start with the Speaker of the city council and your colleagues.
100%. And I think, but why isn't the city council, why isn't the speaker doing that? I mean, we need a foil, we need someone in the city council who's not just going to be a rubber stamp, and I'm tired of it. And my neighbors and my community members are also tired of all this literature.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
I think we need a new name for this act. At this point, you know, 30 years of kicking around the same act that's getting us nowhere and making no progress requires some reinvention. I think we need to stop debating the legality of the act on the contracts clause and the takings clause. This has been investigated, researched by attorneys, or is a commission set up for this? There's no legality issues. Let's get on with it. The truth is, this has to do with real estate developers, and this has to do with greedy landlords, and it has to do with the fact that they're the ones that fund campaign committees and elections across the board. We've really got to get smart. We've also got to stop the city from undermining our small businesses too, with violations, with fees, with all kinds of demands that, you know, might shut down a business for a week because they've turned the gas off. So, it's not just the landlords who are responsible here, it's the city responsible for taking action to support our small businesses. They are the cornerstone of our neighborhoods.
Very similar issue, a little quicker this time, I'll move you along. The reforming the commercial rent tax. This is a bill more recently pushed in the city council, more than 40 sponsors of the 51 members, but hasn't passed, similar to the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. Do you support reforming the commercial rent tax, which under Councilmember Gorodnik's bill would basically raise the threshold significantly for adding that tax to Manhattan businesses below 96th Street? It's a little complicated technical terms, viewers can look up the details online. But do you support that, that bill? And again, if you feel like something is stagnant that you support, you know, my question to Mr. Cho stands for anyone else. If you have strategies for getting something passed that hasn't moved, please let us know. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure, I'll happily answer that question. I certainly support it. And the way we pass it is by getting our small business owners who have been affected by it to come and give testimony. We need to do grassroots campaigning and lobbying, we need to get these stories out. We need to highlight the fact that we're losing about 1,000 storefronts a month in New York City, which is completely unacceptable. This is a crisis, it's an epidemic, and the taxes is a large reason for it. Imagine if your landlord in your house told you, "Hey, thank you for paying rent. In addition to that, I need you to pay the taxes too. In addition to that, I'm going to double, triple, quadruple your rent." It's unacceptable. We need to make sure that as a community, we're involved with the community, and day one, what we need to do is make sure legislation such as this gets to the floor, and that we have small business owners giving their testimony. But not only small business owners, people who've lost their jobs, neighbors who've lost their neighbors. We need to show why this needs to get passed, and how it relates and interrelates to other issues.
Thank you.
I am also in support of it. I think that we definitely need to do the assessment of small businesses that have been displaced. My grandfather worked at Raymond's on Clinton Street, and I think that families that have been affected need to come forward and testify. This is something that's been happening since the 70s and 80s, more so now, with a lot of the same businesses that are being duplicated throughout the streets and the avenues. And a lot of people have lost their jobs, a lot of families have suffered, some of them have lost their housing due to this. So, there's a lot of circumstances that have been brought forth to, to our community based on the fact that there's really no support for the small businesses, there's no support for the families that work there. And I think it's really putting a resource and supportive system to assist these small businesses, and ensuring that they can advocate for themselves, as well as anyone who's worked there, and the community that has been affected by it.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera.
Yes, so I am in support, like as you mentioned, it's got quite a few sponsors on it, and Gorodnik has been, Councilmember Gorodnik has been pushing this bill for a long time. It's important, because south of 96th Street, it is, it is very different from the rest of the city. So, we do have to look at our neighborhoods and how unique they are, and fully realizing you have to work with 50 other colleagues from all over the city, and every neighborhood is different, and every sort of economic situation is different, developing on, you know, on the avenues. And so, you know, I hope that it can pass. Again, you did mention something about the speaker. The speaker of the city council has a tremendous power on whether or not you hear a bill or you vote on it. They also put in to power the chairs of the committees. So, where is the chair on the Small Business Committee? Where is he on something like the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, or something on the commercial rent tax? So, it's going to be really, really important who we put in those chairs. And when it comes to those hearings, when we have those hearings in the chambers, who are we inviting to testify? It is our responsibility to make sure that we are in touch with the small business owners, with groups like the East Village Independent Merchants Association, groups that have organized very grassroots efforts, and made sure that they have pulled together all the businesses, because they also know they need to stay united.
And you've been working in the city council, is that to push these things that have been stalled? Are you willing to take a stand and push the speaker publicly, or how do you move things along like that?
Absolutely. Whether it comes to the speaker or the mayor, I plan to have a very, very good working relationship with them. But if we disagree, or if there is something that District 2 desperately needs, we are going to be vocal, and we are going to look them in the eye and say, "We need this." And if we have to, we're going to, we're going to publicly disagree.
Thank you. Mr. Cho, on the, on the commercial rent tax reform?
Yes, I think it's, I think it's long overdue, and this is going back to the same point. Why haven't we had more movement in, in the legislation here that apparently everyone understands and everyone agrees with? So, what's the problem? Is it the lack of political guts, the courage to stand up against special interest groups? I'm proud to say that I'm not taking any money from PACs, or lobbyists, or special interests. And I think if you want to know where the interests are, follow the money. And I think that's part of the problem that we have in New York City, is that there's influence of special, powerful special interests that are crowding out the voices of ordinary, hard-working people in our neighborhoods. I'm just terribly frustrated about how many times I hear people who've been in the city council who like to say, "Yeah, we're for this." But then what's, where's the action? What's actually happening? You cannot continue to pursue these policies and fail to deliver anymore. People cannot survive anymore. They can't stay in their businesses, they can't stay in their homes. It's unacceptable that the same people, over and over again, going in the same ecosystem of city council leadership, or lack thereof, and can't deliver for our citizens, and I, it's time for that to end.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
So, I'm going to add a little history here. So, that rent tax goes back to the 1970s, when we were experiencing urban blight. I was a child at the time, I'll have you know. But, so that was set up so that that area would be able to generate more revenue for the city of New York. Things have changed significantly. If I move from 96th Street to 97th Street right now, it doesn't look that different to me in terms of businesses, small businesses in particular. to me in terms of businesses, small businesses in particular. So I think it's time to lift that tax. It's too burdensome. It makes, you know, mom and pop shops and small businesses suffer in a way that really puts them out of business. They build businesses for 10 years, blood, sweat and tears, and they're gone. And frankly, that's yet one another burden that the city is placing on our small business owners.
Increase the threshold or get rid of it altogether?
You know, I think you have to really increase the threshold because there are more businesses that are benefiting from not being impacted. That, to me, that's discriminatory for our business owners.
Thank you. So we just spent a bit of time on small businesses. Obviously important both for small business owners and the employees of those small businesses. So let's go back to something that was mentioned by a few folks early on. NYCHA and affordable housing, not always the same thing, but interrelated, obviously. Speak a little bit more about the needs of NYCHA. What do you see and what would you be pushing NYCHA to do and how would you do it? And if you want to talk a little bit about other aspects of affordable housing, please do. Go ahead.
Sure. So being born and raised in NYCHA, I'm really well versed with NYCHA. As a product of ward houses, the first thing that I need to say is that we need to hold NYCHA accountable. It's unacceptable that NYCHA, being the largest landlord in New York City, gets away with discriminating against our residents who have disabilities, gets away with discriminating on our residents who want to add that child to the lease, want to add a spouse to the lease. For those who don't know, NYCHA's structure is based on income. 89% of NYCHA residents are gainfully employed. What that tells us is that NYCHA is getting revenue. NYCHA has the ability to get more revenue just by allowing the people to be added to their lease who are asking to be added to their lease. As a housing attorney with Legal Services in New York City, I've experienced children coming back home and development complexes saying, no, we're not adding that child to the lease. This child is...
An adult.
An adult.
An adult child, okay.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, a parent is living in NYCHA, the parent, the child, their child goes to college, comes back home, wants to be added to the lease, and the development complex are saying, no.
To hold NYCHA accountable, if you're the next city council member, what do you do on this accountability front?
The first thing we need to do is transparency. There's no documentation of who asks to be put on the lease. How many people were asked to be added on to something, right? We know how many people apply to NYCHA, but we don't know how many people apply to be added on to an existing account. And that's important because we're throwing away resources, we're throwing away money, we're throwing away the affordability and the fabric of our city, especially within District 2.
Thank you. Ms. Sinja?
So I think in regards to affordable housing, the preservation of it is really important. And I think one way in doing so is declaring certain areas historical districts. Therefore, that there's no such, there's no way to build these mega towers if it's a historical district because I'm completely against the privatization of public lands. In regards to NYCHA, similar to Jorge, born and raised in public housing, we're actually across the street from one another. The things that I have seen are a lot of our repairs aren't being done, our management offices aren't being held accountable for anything. They need to steer away from a paper trail and start doing everything on computers. There's no way to prove who's been added on to the lease, like he said. I can tell you this for myself because it happened to me when my grandmother had passed away. They didn't even know that I was on this lease. And I was. I was an original household member. And they were giving me a hard time. And I know that this plagues our NYCHA facilities, all our developments.
So what do you do about that?
What did I do?
What do you, no, no, not what did you do in your specific circumstance, but what would you do, like I asked Mr. Vasquez?
First of all, for me, I would take them, I would hold them accountable. I've taken NYCHA to court. I will make sure that everyone does that. There's always like loopholes where they're like, oh, you know, we tried to do XYZ. No, you didn't try enough. And after six years, people get frustrated and they have this distrust with public housing and the elected officials that are supposed to be representing them. And our current city councilperson actually was the Chair of Public Housing, not this term, but the former term. And all of the developments in this District 2 have fallen to this massive, like this array of, we just need a lot more.
Thank you. Thank you. Going to move on, Ms. Rivera?
Sure. So I mentioned public systems before and how we're investing in them. And so, you know, I'm glad that we're talking through proposals and we're talking through initiatives. However, Next Gen NYCHA, to me, is not a viable solution when you're going to sacrifice light and air of the residents when the very purpose of public housing was for open space and was for air. So when we're talking, and I'm glad that the mayor put forward this tax on this wealth tax, a tax on the wealthy. And he mentioned it in going into the MTA. And I'm so happy that he mentioned the fair fares. I thought that was really important to be on the record in that. But when we're looking at ways to tax the wealthy to put money into public systems, we have to consider NYCHA a part of our general infrastructure. So this, the way that they operate, which is very autonomously, and I grew up in subsidized housing, so we're subject to the same rules of HUD, whether it's succession rights, it's really always trying to navigate bureaucracy. So we have to look at how to repair, how to fix the repair system. So people call a separate line, it's not 311. They're constantly opening tickets, they're missing appointments, or people aren't showing up. And there is really no codified way to make sure that things like mold are remediated or that pests, that there's proper pest abatement.
Quick follow before we move on. You started that answer by, I think, saying that the sort of infill development, that's part of Next Generation NYCHA, which is building new housing on NYCHA land, that you're opposed to that part of Next Generation NYCHA? You don't want to see any new development on NYCHA land?
I don't want to see any new development on NYCHA land because there are already issues with the aging infrastructure. So besides the electrical grid, there's sewage infrastructure problems, there's sewage backup on the campuses, and we're a waterfront community. So we have FEMA funds that we're supposed to, in terms of fixing the roofs, for the leaky roofs. We have a lot of work to do to fix the existing buildings and the almost 10,000 families that are in District 2.
Thank you. Mr. Cho, NYCHA?
Yeah, you know, I will make a point here that I think it's interesting to say we need more affordable housing units, we need more inventory, and still be opposed to new developments that will help create that capacity. You can't continue to say that you're against new developments and you're still for affordable housing. It's just the supply and demand issues don't square up. And I think when it comes to NYCHA, I think there needs to be transparency as well. I agree with my friends here on the panel who talk about who's on the lease, who are actually living in these units. And I've heard a lot of stories about people who are curious and who are living in subsidized housing, like, well, how are you living in that place when you have maybe two incomes, no children, and different kinds of like abuse when it comes to who's taking advantage of these programs? And I think that needs to look into as well. Again, transparency and the lack thereof in this whole system, I think, is really, really troubling in that we don't have proactive leadership in the city council who's willing to go out and say, yeah, let's take a look at what's happening here and let's shed some light on this whole system that we all agree needs reform.
Thank you.
I'd love to be able to respond to that.
Yeah, I was going to come back to you after, Ms. Silver, yeah, let's come back to you. But Ms. Silver, on NYCHA?
Yep, so I sit on Community Board 6's Housing Homelessness Human Rights Committee, and we have focused on Next Gen. And, you know, one of the things that I do not support is privatization of that land. I think that's a big mistake. I think that's a great opportunity for building supportive housing that we know works to address homelessness. We've got 124,000 homeless children in the city of New York. That's an opportunity for us to provide homes that are affordable, that provide them with the services, whether it's mental health, whether it's education, whether it's medical support. To me, to be giving that away to private developers is against supporting the same people who fund campaigns across the board.
I don't think I've heard the suggestion to put supportive housing on NYCHA land, but that's interesting. So Mr. Cho sort of indicated that you, being against the infill development, doesn't square with the need for more affordable housing. So what's your response to that and how do you create more affordable housing if you're not willing to allow it?
The proposal as it stands is for privatization. And I think that if it's public land, that it should be housing that is for, generally, what we need. We need low, moderate housing, income housing. We also desperately need senior housing. And I agree that we need supportive housing as well. We have a homelessness crisis. The only way to truly reduce recidivism of the chronically homeless is to build new supportive housing where there's onsite social workers and 24-hour services for people to have the support that they need. So if we're talking about building on public housing in a place that has been neglected for a minimum of the past 30 years with no money coming from Washington and the city continuously having to step up and put funds into public housing, we need truly affordable, not 80/20. 80/20 is not acceptable. And for the billion dollars that we're losing in tax revenue for a fraction of the housing that's being built, when it's 20% for this inclusionary housing, it's not just.
So to get more affordable housing, you're open and supportive housing, as you indicated, you're open to more development, but you just don't want to see it on NYCHA land? Is there land in the district that, not necessarily naming specific plots, but that you think is available to build new housing to increase the supply?
Well, you know, every square inch of this neighborhood has been under speculation for a very, very long time. And so I'm very, I'm looking forward to, you know, once being elected as the next city councilperson, to looking at the vacancies, the open lots. I know the comptroller just put out a report about where there's vacant lots. I want to really hone in on that in District 2 and see where it's viable. Of course, keeping all of our open spaces, keeping our gardens open, and looking at how we can have creative solutions to housing. I don't want NYCHA to be the first place we look when, again, it's been neglected for such a long time and we have to take care of the people that are living there right now. There are other financing solutions.
Thanks. So let's talk education, obviously another big bucket issue, small business housing. Let's talk education. It was mentioned a couple of times early on. One or two specific things that need to be done that a city council member can have influence on. Mr. Vasquez?
Sure. We need to, we have an influence on what happens in our public buildings. So when we're talking about our public school systems, we need to ensure that we keep them open as long as possible. One of the things is creating after-school programs. We need after-school programs. I'm an attorney today as a product of these after-school programs. We also need to be creative and innovative. One of the things we need to do to ensure that we're competitive with the future is offer technology programs, especially as we potentially have Silicon Alley coming into the district and ensuring that our children, our youth, our students are prepared and competitive for those jobs. Those jobs with just a high school diploma, computer program on average, make $75,000 a year. That's the difference between being able to stay in the district or leaving the district. But certainly, we need to make sure that our education system is prepared for the next generation and is using the resources within the district. And that's something that a city council member has control over.
Like what?
Control over advocating funding, working with the district attorney to ensure that confiscated funds, for those who don't know, confiscated funds is when police arrest individuals for doing crimes and they seize funding, that those fundings are being spent back into the community. And that's something that a city council person has some control over.
When you say Silicon Alley coming into the district, are you referring to the Union Square property that the mayor wants to refurbish? Or what were you referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. And what's your, let's actually talk about that briefly because that's become a little bit of a contentious issue in the district. There's a proposal to use a city plot of land in Union Square to create a new tech hub to get it, create some of these jobs, but that New Yorkers have to be prepared to fill, of course. What's your stance on that development?
I think it's a stance that I'm for bringing jobs to the district. I'm for the development, but I'm also for the balance. I'm for the zoning. As a housing attorney who's only represented tenants, I understand the effect that bringing something of that magnitude can have to our residents. So I'm for it, but we need to have some restrictions. I'm for the building of it. We need jobs. And we also need resources for our students, resources for our seniors. Our infrastructure with regards to the internet is outdated. Something like this could bring better internet quality and also some of youth employment programs.
Thank you. I'm going to stop you there, but thank you. Ms. Sinja, so on education, a couple of solutions, and then I'll give you a prompt at the end to weigh in on the Union Square development.
Okay. In regards to education, I'm really tired of hearing that there are good schools and bad schools within our district. All schools need to be great schools. And unfortunately, we have a lot of schools that are performing under the standards, like below the standards. One of our schools are defined as a shelter school. Like, I don't like those terminologies. I feel that there are organizations that actually can create community school models. My current job, I actually work for a nonprofit that is the largest recipient of community school grants. And I think that that's something that's needed because it brings in family resource centers, it brings in medical facilities within these schools. There's a lot of overcrowding in the schools with about 38 kids per class. I think that that's ridiculous. I went to school and there was like 17 of us and, you know, everyone was...
What do you do about that as a city council member?
Well, a lot of the overcrowding, I think that we just need to maximize the space, like the buildings. We need to get more building space. There are a lot of abandoned buildings that we can draw upon to create new schools. I think for me, it was funny, it's actually not funny, but when I think of public housing, we're our own city. You know what I mean? Like, especially along the waterfront. And a lot of the schools there are the schools that are coined "bad" schools. So I think it's developing a new model of what schools are going to look like, which is why I'm pro-community schools, because I think that it gives our community and our families everything that they need right there.
On the Union Square tech hub, what's your stance on that project?
Well, I'm for zoning if it benefits the community. And I think that...
Or upzoning it for allowing a change?
Right, the tech hub, because I think that the tech hub is something that's needed. I feel that it will produce jobs. I feel that our, and I said it at one of our other forums, anything that has to do with science, technology, engineering and math in our district, the lower part of the district, is really a joke. So a lot of our young people, a lot of the adults don't even go into those fields because they haven't been properly taught. So I think having something like this in our community will really ensure that there's some sort of motivation to move forward in the science field and the technology field.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera, on education?
Sure. So I think in terms of overcrowding, we do need new school construction. So I was a part of a volunteer effort to secure a site for a new school in Lower Manhattan. And so I'm committed to that as a neighbor, as a Lower East Side resident, a District 2 resident, but also as the next councilperson, to make sure that we build that school, which will be for school District 1 and school District 2 kids. So I think that's incredibly important when it comes to overcrowding and especially with all of the residential construction that is all over our neighborhood. We know that there are going to be new families coming into the district. As a councilperson, you do have this unique opportunity to fund two kinds of things, right? You get to fund infrastructure projects, so you could update technology in some of these outdated classrooms. So for the schools that don't have the resources because of their socioeconomic factors around them, we really need to make sure that we're updating these classrooms, giving families computers to take home and learn how to use while also trying to make sure that we have affordable internet. And also funding programming, so the after-school programming you mentioned, making sure that it's not just after-school, that we have weekend programming. And for young people from all ages to young adults, making sure that they have something to do. I think that when it comes to working with school leadership teams, parent-teacher associations, community education councils, of course, all school leadership and the parents and the teachers, we have to make sure that we're coming up with policies that are community-based from the ground up and that we are looking at the best way to implement a policy that is fair to everyone that tackles school integration.
Thank you. And of school integration, we need to maybe get into that a little bit. But the Union Square project in favor? Thoughts on anything that needs to be changed about it or requirements?
So, you know, it's at an interesting location. It's like at the nexus of four different types of zoning, so it is an interesting project. It is going to be big. It's going to bring a lot of people into the district when it's built. And I agree, I think we need the jobs for this 21st century economy. need the jobs for this 21st century economy. I want to make sure that the community actually gets to use the space, that we do have our young people going in there and acquiring the skills to enter into the tech world. When you build something like that, you have to be prepared for what's coming right after it. And with all the constant construction, you know that people are going to see this tech hub being in development, and they're going to continue to look for every square inch of land around it and build. So we're going to get a lot of people into the neighborhood, and we have to make sure that we're taking care of the existing residents in the area, the existing residents, the existing businesses. And so people are calling for a zoning of the neighborhoods right around it, and I think that we have to look out for those people that have made those neighborhoods so great. And I'm for rezoning of, you know, University Place, Lower Fourth Avenue.
To keep development down there.
Absolutely.
That's part of this negotiation.
Especially what happened after the old Bowmore site, which is where I used to go bowling. It's on University Place. So what they do is they bought not just the space, but the air rights around it, and they use the current zoning to build the skyscraper that is totally out of context with the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you. On education, Mr. Cho.
Yeah, so I think, yes, we do need more schools, but I think we also need to have a more of a thoughtful approach in that students don't just learn in a classroom, that they can learn anywhere, as long as they have the infrastructure, they have access to high-speed internet, they have the devices, they have the curriculum, to learn wherever they may be. And I think I am the candidate who has delivered on creating opportunities for that infrastructure to be in place. I'm very proud to say that I was spearheading President Obama's Connect Ed Initiative, that by 2020, every school in New York City will have access to the world's best education technology infrastructure. So every kid, no matter where they are in the district, in the city, can have access to high-speed internet in schools and libraries. And I think those are the kinds of resources that we need to be thinking about and creatively coming up with solutions that are not just building more schools, but innovating the way and how we apply education and where kids can actually learn, wherever they may be in the city.
Thank you. And on the Union Square project?
Yeah, you know, I think it's an interesting project, and I think it doesn't necessarily meet the needs of the community. I think what we're all talking about here is more affordable housing units. We need more spaces for small businesses to thrive. It's not mutually exclusive of having a tech hub. I think maybe it needs to be a mixed-use kind of facility. What I really want to caution against is the kinds of people who will be drawn to this tech hub. Is it going to be looking like Silicon Valley? Is it going to be white, wealthy, male people primarily who benefit from these, from this tech hub? I think it needs to service everyone in the community. It needs to be reflective of the community at large and give opportunities to kids and folks of all walks of life the same kind of opportunity to thrive.
Is there something you do in negotiating that that ensures that?
I think we just need to bring it up and say, look, if you guys want this land, the city controls who gets to use this land, let's make sure that we're demanding more of them. And that's what I think has been frustrating about this process when it comes to ULP and whatever other sort of zoning debates. Why aren't we asking and demanding more of the developers?
Thank you. Ms. Silver on education first, or?
Sure. So I spent two decades raising my kids in New York City public schools, learning with and from teachers and principals and supporting them, and on the community education council, working with parents to find new construction sites, many of them, 281, Spruce Street, Morton Street. And I say that not to pat myself on the back, to talk, but really to emphasize how solutions emerge from the community. I can't underscore enough what Ronnie just said about exacting benefits from developers for our students. STEM training, technology, engineering, science, math needs to happen in elementary school. The earlier our students are exposed to that, the better chance they have of pursuing those careers. I know the mayor has talked about STEM training, a computer science mandatory class in high school. It's too late. You know, this is their universe. It's all about technology. And frankly, if we're waiting until that point, they're not going to be our engineers and our computer scientists. I'd also like to add, when the Baruch Bath House gets renovated, I'd like Google to be in there, providing training, services. Why aren't we getting, you know, benefits from Google, Facebook, AOL, all these technology leaders that, you know, are our neighbors in New York City?
Well, that's a good segue into the Union Square tech hub. I mean, you're talking about a different issue, but sort of similar theme there. What's your take on that project?
So that neighborhood is petrified, frankly, of overdevelopment. I'm down there all the time, having those conversations. So we've got to do some kind of zoning to protect the character of that neighborhood. Do I believe that technology is critical for our city? Absolutely. Let's, again, exact something from whatever technology companies are going in there. Stop letting developers build these big high-rises, Hudson Yards, no school, no hospital. We get nothing for it. We're really naive. There are so many other cities where that's built into the planning. But again, we have to take real estate developers' money out of the election process.
Thank you. So we're in our final about 10 minutes here. We're going to sneak a few more things in. My next, my second question coming up is going to be to name briefly one sort of community-based thing that you think is important. Is it a bike lane? Is it a park space? Is it, you know, a charter that you want to see charter schools come into the district? Any sort of one community-based thing. But before we get to that, I want you to grade Mayor de Blasio on his first term and say yes or no whether you will be voting for him again this fall. Letter grade, A to F, and whether you're voting for him this fall?
I would say I'm undecided if I'm voting for Mayor de Blasio. He hasn't spoke about how he's going to improve or what he's going to do for District 2. As the next city councilperson, I'm thinking beyond myself, beyond my family that lives in the district. I'm thinking about the neighbors and the community as a whole. And sadly, I would love for the mayor to persuade me as to why I should vote, and the individuals who are supporting my grassroots campaign should also support him. He's not speaking to our district.
Letter grade? Sorry, I got to move.
With regards to a grade, I would grade him on average. I would say he's been about a B mayor. He came in saying he was going to pass the Small Business Job Survival Act. For those who know me or know my family, we're bodega owners, we're entrepreneurs. I'm a kid from the neighborhood who greatly benefited from these small businesses from working there.
Apologies, but I have to move along if we have time for a letter grade, and do you plan to vote for the mayor?
I would give him a C. If I'm planning to vote for him at this moment, I am not.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera?
I'd say a B. You know, for things like IDNYC and UPK, I thought those were really important in terms of addressing wealth inequality, and that was the campaign that he ran on in 2013, was "The Tale of Two Cities." I would love to see more talk, more walking the walk in terms of really making sure that we're lifting families out of poverty. So I'd give him a B. As of right now, I'm not sure, you know, what I'm going to do. I would love to see a debate actually happen with the mayor and his opponents, and so far right now-
I think we will see some of that debate, so you'll have a chance to make your mind up. Letter grade, and whether you plan to vote for the mayor?
Yeah, you know, I'd give the mayor a solid C. And I think about, you know, many of the initiatives that he passed that helped immigrants and documented people of color to be able to take advantage of city resources. I think that's a great, UPK, another great example. But, you know, "The Tale of Two Cities," at this point, I think it needs a better ending in that we don't have the kind of affordable housing that we need for moderate to lower-income families.
Do you plan to vote for him in the fall?
I, at this point, I don't think we have much of a choice. I'm not going to vote for a Republican, and I think de Blasio is what we have, and so I plan on voting for the mayor.
Thank you.
As a former teacher-
Yes.
I'm going to give him an incomplete.
Okay.
He's got a lot of work to do. I think he needs to really get out there and convince us of those things that he's done that are positive, and tell us what his plan is to address those issues that have been left, you know, by the wayside.
So does he get the second term to fix the incomplete?
On the education front, I want to say he gets a higher, a higher grade from me. He understands that the chancellor needs to be an educator. He understands that our schools are overcrowded, underfunded, and segregated along race and class lines. His plan for addressing that segregation also is incomplete. I hope he's got the second book report coming for us.
Will you vote for him?
I will vote for him. I'm a Democrat. I will vote for de Blasio.
Thank you. 10 seconds each. What's one local project or one big need, like I said, bike lane, park, a new charter school, something you think the district really needs that we haven't talked about yet?
We need a single stop within the district, a space that small business owners and neighbors alike could come and get resources. As an attorney, I've been giving pro bono advice to small business owners, to tenants, on how to navigate the court system, how to navigate creating a business, how to apply for these grants for minority and women-owned businesses that the city offers. But we need a central location, and that's what's missing.
Thank you.
I think that we need more healthcare access. So I would, I would believe that, I would want to see healthcare within the schools, within community-based organizations, providing the direct services. A lot of the constituents can't make it to some of these hospitals. Some of the hospitals are being closed, they're being merged. So it's just really giving them access to it within their own community.
Thank you.
Yes, so I will say that there is a single stop in the southern part of the district, but I do agree that we need to expand on those services and make some of them more central. You asked for something specific, so I'm going to get super specific. There's a couple of parks that haven't been renovated in over 20 years, and that's something that the councilperson can do in terms of the funding that they have. One of them is Sour Park on East, Joseph Sour Park on East 12th Street, between Avenue A and B, and the other one is Bellevue Park South, which is on First Avenue.
Thank you.
I think we need a new generation of leadership, actual leadership in the city council that's going to walk the walk and talk the talk, that can attack all of the issues that we're talking about, not just a single one. I think one thing in particular, there's a piece of legislation that helped support workers on on-call and scheduling issues. Councilmember Mendez did not vote for that. Why didn't her staff, why didn't the people who are supporting or urge her to vote for something that's going to impact so many of our own neighbors? This sort of absenteeism in leadership, I think, is the biggest problem we have, and that's why we have more issues to be challenging than we, at this current, have the capacity to deal with.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure, yeah. I would say that I think that it's a very important bill. I think on-call scheduling is a big problem in retail, amongst other industries. And I will say that, you know, Councilmember Mendez is her own person, and that I was actually endorsed by the labor organizations that championed that bill, including RWDSU.
So if you had been the councilperson, you would have voted for it?
I would have.
Thank you.
What's the point of the legislative director who can't get her member to vote for a piece of legislation that she supports?
See, now we don't have time for this back and forth, but I appreciate it. Do you want to respond briefly to that?
Sure. I mean, there's a lot of bills that I worked on that I am very, very proud of. Intro 385, about mold remediation and pest debatement, 1233 for animal rights, a new bill that was introduced that protects the trans community and their rights. So I've worked on a lot of bills. On that bill, I can't recall the exact date on when she voted on it, but again, I've been backed by many labor organizations that championed that bill because they know that I'm for workers' rights, collective bargaining, and the right to organize.
Thank you. Ms. Silver, something hyper-local?
Yeah, you know, we never talk about New Yorkers with disabilities. We never talk about students with disabilities. I really want to be a champion for that community in particular. So along those lines, Bellevue South Park, it hasn't been addressed in 22 years. My oldest daughter's 22. You know, that was a problem then. It's still a problem. There has been a proposed ADA-compliant dog run there. I'd actually like to see that entire park become a healing park. It's surrounded by the hospital corridor. It's one of the limited green spaces in District 2. I would jump on that in a heartbeat. That'll be a real pet project for me.
Thank you. So we're actually going to stick with this direction for closing statements. I know we've continued to circle around this way. Closing statements, I'm going to keep you under a minute. Your last statement, at least for this debate, this program, to voters in City Council District 2, as to why on September 12th, they should vote for you. So Ms. Silver.
Thank you so much, Ben, for doing such a good job today and all of my colleagues here. I want to say that local politics is more important than ever. We know what's going on in DC. We got Agita every day when we turn on CNN. And so I think we want to focus on local politics. I think that we have an opportunity for new leadership in Council District 2 with a new focus, and for the change that this council district is ready for. I want to focus on public education, affordable housing, and quality of life. I've worked for 25 years on those issues, as I said, as an education advocate, a community activist, and as a mother. Moms get things done. I have always worked on a community-based solutions basis. I will continue to do that, and as a city council member, I'll be able to do even more. I was always on the other side of the city council, and I'll say it, I was working with elected officials across the board. I know what it's like to be a constituent and not be responded to. I think that that's been a big problem in this council district is constituent services. I hear it across the board as I'm traveling on the campaign.
Thank you to Mary Silver.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Cho?
Thank you, Ben. It's really been a great conversation today. I think this city needs a new generation of leadership. It needs a new perspective. It needs fresh blood, and I don't think you can expect different outcomes with the same approach. I've been at the highest levels of government, delivering for people, delivering for New Yorkers, and I want to draw from that experience. I intend to, to deploy those resources, creative thinking, new perspectives, new ideas, new voices, new people at the table, to deliver services and goods to our community. I think constituency services is the most important thing that our council member can do, and we just have been in outdated ways of doing that. This passive engagement of how we want to service our neighborhood, it cannot happen. We can't just sit back and wait for people to complain to come to you. We've got to go out to where people are. We've got to find some trouble to get ourselves into. You can't do that with the same people over and over again who are representing this neighborhood, who claim to know everything about it. And yet, my question is, is your rent more affordable now than it was eight years ago, four years ago, 12 years ago? I think that question is easily answered by many of my constituents, and I'm going to fight against that, and I'm going to deliver for my neighbors.
Thank you to Ronnie Cho. Ms. Rivera?
Yes, so I'm Carlina Rivera, and I'm from the district, born and raised. Very, very proud to be a resident of District 2, and having lived and breathed these issues every day that are affecting us. So I am someone who has really, really worked, a hard-working person, who is compassionate, who is a great listener, and who people trust. And for me, I have had a lifetime of accomplishments before even entering the city council. So whether it's hundreds of evictions prevented, whether it's working to deliver presentations on know-your rights, consumer rights, tenants' rights, healthcare, really making sure that people have the information they need, whether it's through a referral, or whether it's me going with them to housing court, and making sure that they know that they have someone that is going to be supportive. It's really, really important that we have somebody who has the skills, who knows the demand and responsibilities of this job. Anyone who goes into public service or who goes into the nonprofit world realizes this is not a nine-to-five. This is 18-hour days. This is seven days a week. This is all the time, 24 hours, being on call. And we really do have to combat a Trump agenda that is really going after disenfranchised communities, which I have prided myself in working with, and making sure that we protect our communities from climate change, making sure that we're creating and preserving affordable housing, making sure that we're investing in our public education system that is under attack. And I have a lot of great support. People have responded to my message, hundreds of community leaders, labor, other elected officials, and everyday people who have invested in the campaign, because I'm running a positive campaign that I am proud of. And I want other young people to see, the youngest person in this race, and say, there's someone who is doing it right.
Thank you. Thank you, Carlina Rivera. Ms. Sanchez?
So I feel that there has to be new leadership within the city council and in several of the elected seats that we have. Things haven't been working, especially in our district. It's been close to 20 years, the same leadership, and there hasn't been anything positive coming out of it. I feel that our community has not been educated. I feel that our community has been let down by the elected officials. And I feel that with new leadership, and with new leadership, and with this generation that has been ignited and motivated with all of the fresh faces that are coming into this race, things will be changing. I think that it's time to steer away from this old machine that's been harping on the leadership, the Democratic leadership in our district. And I feel that September 12th, people need to vote for Jasmine Sanchez. I've been doing this my entire life. I'm not trained. My victories come from my volunteer work, my establishment of my own organization, and I do things genuinely, and I think people need that in a city councilperson. You can't tie your victories to your previous employment. You have to do these things on your own, and if they vote for me, that is what they're going to get. I have a full-time job now, and I'm campaigning. So I am working very hard, and that's what they're going to receive come January.
Thank you, Jasmine Sanchez. Mr. Vasquez?
I'm Jorge Vasquez, and I'm asking for your vote come September 12th, because we need to unify the district. We need to bring everyone together. It doesn't matter whether you say Assalamu alaikum, or Bediyeong, or Shalom. We all want the same thing. As I'm touring the district, as I'm hearing things, we need change. I think everyone on this panel would agree, we need change, right? The system hasn't been working the way that it could. There's a lot of changes that we need. We need after-school programs. Our seniors need protections. Our residents throughout the district need protection, and we have laws in place. As an attorney, I realize what laws we need to tweak to make our district a more efficient district and bring people together. The fact that we have five candidates sitting on this stage from neighborhoods throughout the district shows one thing. We're not unified, one. Two is, no one is sharing resources. We need transparency in City Hall. I'm that candidate. Vote Jorge Vasquez. Let's work together. Let's ensure that we all have a seat at the table, and that we could all retire and prosper and grow children within this beautiful district called District 2 of New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge Vasquez. I want to thank all the candidates for participating in today's debate. The primary elections will be held on Tuesday, September 12th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website at LWVNYC.org, and you can find us at GothamGazette.com. Please remember, only voters enrolled in a political party having a primary may vote in a primary election. Thank you for watching Race to Represent on Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Goodbye.